Under new business, public hearing on projects committed by RX Medical LLC for a medical waste facility on 6.76 acres of property located in Landmark 685 and 756, Second District, Third Section, 740th and 19th District, Section, Second Section, Pauling County, Georgia Lot Number Three, Hyrum Industrial Park, on Metro Martito, this is Ann Post Three. Ann, this comes to your office, but I think you want to make a statement?
I did. I wanted to reiterate what we discussed the last time this came up on an agenda, that we are holding the public hearing on behalf of this permitting process for each seat, but the local board does not vote on this agenda item, so it will not appear on the agenda tonight at seven because there is not a vote taken by the local board. The permitting is actually done at the state level.
We'll open this up for public comment. The gentlemen with RX Medical are here, and I'd ask y'all to step forward and make a statement. You've come before us one time before, exactly what your plans are. So if you'd like to do that at this time, let's hear everyone up to the first person.
Thank you all for letting us come back and address y'all again. My name's Jeff Locke. I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
It's on.
Jeff Locke, Chief Operating Officer with RX Medical, and I wanted to let y'all know what we're doing. First, I wanted to address a couple of issues that I think were present last time and are still present on understanding what we're doing. First of all, I'd like to state what we are not doing. That seems to be a major concern of a number of people. One thing we are not doing is we are not incinerating anything. This is not an incineration plant. We are not busting or burning or emitting any kind of toxins into the air. And I'll get to our process in just a second. Also, another issue I think has been thrown around is the fact about us formerly being in the city of Kennesaw and going through this process there, and that we were run out of Kennesaw for this. That was not the case. We actually went to Kennesaw and went through the process there. It was actually approved, but I'm sure y'all knowing that being a small business, that economics plays a major factor in this. So we decided to leave that location. It was just too expensive for us to get things going there. And that's where we ended up in Pauling County, and we're excited to be here. Now, our process, what is our process? We actually use an autoclave system because they pressurize saturated steam vessel. You know, I have a picture over here. I can show you. Okay. That is the vessel there. If you can see that. What we do, what happens in our process is we service medical facilities, hospitals, doctor's offices, offices, labs, anything of that sort. What we do is we remove the red bag waste. I think somebody asked before what red bag waste was. Red bag waste is anything that takes place in the doctor's office that comes in contact with humans. Okay? So we're talking about galls, galls pads, gowns, gloves, condom pressures, anything that comes in contact with them is the fuck. Hospitals have this protocol where they, their operations, they have waste that comes through them, it goes into these red bag wastes. At those locations, they are required to package this up into bags, their red bag, and they have to package that into either boxes or containers that we provide. What happens then is our services come in trucks, pick up that waste in those containers, bring them back to our location, and we process them through this machine. It's actually called a rotorclave system. Now, this system is not a regular autoclave system. It is rotorclave because it turns inside, it has an internal drum that nashes up the waste on the interior of the vessel. The saturated heated steam treats the waste, and when removed from that, that vessel is considered solid waste. Once it comes out of the vessel and is considered solid waste, then it goes into a shred. We shred the waste, which reduces the waste by 65 percent. This is a major, major factor in our process. We wanted to do something the right way, and we feel that it does. And we see, feel that once this goes to the landfills, then it actually is reduced, it's more compactable. The landfills like it better, it moves better, it actually, it consumes it better after the reduction. One of the other factors I think with concern, I believe, was somebody, I don't know if you have specific data, I think it was you, Ms. Chappone, is regarding the water. It is discharged after our process through this machine, and we had met with Ms. Ashmore and her team at the Pauling County Water Authority, gave them all the information they needed in order to, I guess, vet our process to where the process that we're using meets the requirements Another factor I think is important to note is our experience. I believe we have over 800, excuse me, not 800, 150 years of experience in our, on our team. We have my partner, John, and I have extensive backgrounds. He has extensive backgrounds in logistics, and I have this background in different types of waste, of this waste specifically. We have a, our chief compliance officer, which is a very big part of what we do, is doing, and the fact that we have to adhere to EPD rules, and he has over 40 years' experience in dealing with this. He actually ran a company like this in the 1990s. He actually inspects hospitals presently around the country for their compliance, our rectorous compliance, which will, he actually is a retired EPD officer that actually did inspections on, on locations around the city. We have a lady from South Carolina that is in her run, one of our divisions, and she has 15 years' experience doing this exact same thing. So I believe we are covered on the experience side. And also, again, once this process goes through, we will submit to the EPD for approval for the permit. So that, like I think Mr. Cooper said in the beginning, that is the final, final process in our process.
Anybody? Do you want to have questions? Mr. Locke?
Yeah, Mr. Locke. The material that comes from the hospitals, is any of that cancerous or infectious?
No, it is not. We've not processed any cancers or radioactive, you know.
Does the hospital separate that now?
Yes. It's all separated. Yes. It's separated in different, different bags, different bag, different boxes.
The water coming out of the system is clean?
The water is sterile. Our process is high heat, it's close to 300 degrees, for a period of about 45 to 50 minutes, which makes everything sterile.
Is it possible to run a, what we call a run-through, and it not come out sterile or indicate that it's not?
We have, we have protocols to indicators that we put in the, in the each load to know whether it's processed properly or not, and it's all electronically.
If it's not, what happens?
It's rerun again until it meets the right standards. I guess in that scenario, if it never does, then we actually have to transport it away from our location to a, to a secondary location. And that's one requirement that EPD has, to have approval, we have to have a, a contract with another company that we process in case we have a problem with our machines.
My last question, in the event when it is pulverized or shredded, it is now some of waste, where does that take it to?
A landfill.
You know which landfill?
Well, we've actually been in touch with Pauling County landfill. It actually meets standards of Pauling County, and I think a major part of that is the fact that we shred it, with waste reductions 65 percent. But we, there's a location that's out in land, potato, also, and there's one up in the water.
Any other questions, Mr. Locke? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, the public hearing is open. Citizens wishing to speak will come to the lecture. Do they need to sign in?
Yes, the sign-in sheet's up there.
There's a sign-in sheet at the lecture, and you'll come and sign in. And put your dress, please. Everybody, if you would, please address your comments to the chair.
Good morning, Miss Skipper, and gentlemen, I already found everyone well today. I am back again to, I am the mayor of the city of Hyrum, and I am back today to address this facility, not only for the people of Hyrum, but for my county as a total. We do have concerns about this particular facility. It does, I know there are engineers that understand far better than we do, but it does carry an stigma with it, you know, as far as what it is. The request is for it to be located in the very, the most congested area of Pauling County. We have an average of 50,000 cars that go through there a day, cannot even see numerous, numerous amount of people that are in the city of Hyrum every day. We have a school a mile away from this facility. We have residents living all around the facility. That definitely says they, they value their property to the cream. One of my concerns is to be able to carry this waste to this facility. Not only the road that the facility will be on is heavily traveled, people going back and forth to shop and eat and entertain. It would be the process of anyway you get into it, you would have to either cross a railroad track, which to me carries a certain amount of danger, or you'd have to bring it right through Hyrum, our residential section of Hyrum. These are concerns of mine. I'm sorry, I made a few notes, but I wanted to let you know, I don't want to get ahead of my facility anything, obviously. My confusion about this with the EPD is we have to, as a city of Hyrum, we have a very costly contractor we have to do yearly in order to make sure that we are EPD compliant with frame orders, standing order, anything on that. And I really have a problem if the EPD then would consider letting the facility like this. I think the gentleman just said it's under 300 pounds of pressure. Accidents happen. And while this is not a fair concern to the EPD, which it may be, I understand that the application has not been submitted yet. We are not opposed to jobs in Pauling County. We welcome jobs. But I, my theater is in this newly opened industrial park in Hyrum, Hyrum Industrial Park, that it could drive away potential manufacturers because truthfully, nobody wants to see a medical waste facility right in the heart of our community. And at that time, those are all the points I have, is because of the residents, the roads, the congestion, especially the elementary school. I just do not feel like this is a proper facility to be sitting in the area that it wants to sit. I know in Pauling County, you surely have more outlying areas that this could be, that would not encroach on residents. It could be devastating to them as far as their property values, and it's just, it's a scary, scary thing. And I know with all its commercial, safe, shopping, we've asked a lot of people, nobody wants this facility. This is what I want the EPD to understand. I understand that y'all do not have any say into this, it's not something you'll vote on, but we do ask you as our county leaders to advise us what else we can do to make sure we get the word to EPD. It's not welcomed, and that is, you know, that's my gentlemen, it is just something that there is other places that are not so close in that this could be located. I did have one petition, and this is one of me. I don't know who to give this to. Miss Skipper, if you know.
It's, it's letting it ultimately.
To that, okay, thank you. I like to say, you know, it will be no problem, that's a lot of pages just in three days, so it'll be no problem to get many more signatures. I don't know when this application will be submitted, but I will have them to you before that time. And please, just again, consider where we are, and we're proud of our area, we work hard. It costs us a lot of money to maintain our area with law enforcement and everything. Did not put this facility right there in the middle of where everything is doing. Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
I guess I wanted to clarify, we are not submitting the application to EPD, but we submitted by the actual property owners as applicants?
I just wanted to understand that, Miss Skipper. So that's my question. Who, who do we get this to? Do we just send them directly to the EPD?
Division.
Because my understanding, this is, the EPD will follow up with the public input?
That's my understanding. They'll want to know whether we're having a public hearing, and they'll look at our minutes in terms of what the comments were.
Okay. So then, what would be your best advice to carry the, the packet onto EPD, or with a line of prevent it?
I don't know how to use pad. I would say, Miss Letman, would you put your notes pad and work it and pack it to?
Pat was just my statement, so, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? This public hearing.
Good morning.
And the public. Let's talk about protocol. If I walk in a bathroom and smell roses, I know the person in front of me didn't plant a rose bush in that bathroom. Let's get real about RDX Medical. The name kind of says it all. They are a biohazard waste cleaning facility. You can call it what you want to, but that's what it is. And the location they picked is one of the pristine locations, and I own multiple properties all over Pauling County, it's on right around the corner. Twice, garbage transfer stations have been turned down in this area. Even one of the garbage transfer stations said they were going to spray stuff on the garbage so we wouldn't smell it, kind of like that rose smell. But let's think about the city of Hyrum that's right next door, and a few thousand feet down the road, here's our biggest movie theater in Pauling County, just down the road from this facility. This facility has a place, but it should be near chemical manufacturing type stuff, not in an area that has gotten surrounded by commercial development. That whole area is morphed into the major system of Pauling County, it's the eye of this county. You've got Longhorn Stakes, IHOP, all those places right around the corner from this facility, and the trucks are going to enter from 278, more than likely, and go right through all of this process. You need to give serious consideration, the EPD does, to what this will do to the city of Hyrum and the county of Pauling County. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Thank y'all for hearing us again today. And, you know, my major concerns, you've already heard, you know, I don't want my family to breathe the air where all this steam is released into it.
Make sure you state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trinie Cole. T-R-I-N-I-E. Thank you. Anyway, you've heard most of my concerns before. I am concerned about the runoff, the water that will, the newspaper reporter last night said that he heard that all the water would be contained. We were told at the previous meeting that the water would be transferred into our storm sewer, which, that, I don't know if there's a conflict of information there. I'd like for that to be clarified, and I did want the odor addressed, and also noise, that could be a lot of noise, pollution with grinding needles, that kind of thing. But the major thing I'm concerned with is, I was drawn to this, and I think it was timely that Rory came today talking about the drought. I know in Colorado, this system, they do not want this system in Colorado, and they have another system that requires no water, because we're going into a drought here, or we're in a drought, this is going to require a lot of water to process all this. So where is that going to come from if we're going into a drought? And why would anybody want to start a business like that when they may potentially be shut down because of the water usage that would be required? Another thing is, Hyrum water supply is fed from wells. So, you know, and I know this is potentially sterile, but it's also potentially hazardous. And you know, in the most astutely kept facilities where we go for surgical procedures, there's infection, there's risk, and I know risk is good. I'm all about growth, and you can't have growth without risk. You know, the Wright Brothers, if they had not flown that plane, they took a great risk, but they didn't fly it over the community. So for me, you know, risk is good, we need growth. To me, this would deter growth and even damage the growth that's already there. But the thing I'm most concerned about is our water system. If Hyrum is fed through wells, which it is, I think there are three wells right there in the city, this is transferred into our stormwater system. I mean, this is going to affect our water supply. We know that it will. I mean, output's going to be detrimental, and then the input could be potentially dangerous. So that, that's my greatest concern. So could this, could these things be addressed today, do you think? I don't know. But I hope that the EPA will take this into consideration, because we're on uncharted territory here. We've never, we don't have anything in place that will protect us from potential dangers. And like I said, and steam, you know, steam is supposed to be sterile, but I know we've all gotten infections from the dentist, or a place else where things are autoclaved. So I just hope and pray that this won't come into our community, but I do hope that they'll be given another place to install their business, a place that will be advantageous for them, but not detrimental to the community of what the city of Hyrum has worked hard to put in place and put there for the citizens and the potential growth to come in. So, thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Miss Ashmore, would you address the wells that supply in Hyrum?
The waste from RDX facility will be discharged to the sanitary sewer system, not the storm sewer system. So it would, from this location, the treatment would take place at our copper mine, always want to treat it, so.
And the wells are, they used to be the sole supply of Hyrum?
They are, we provide supplemental supply to the city of Hyrum that would be used by the original crew.
Jeff, do you mind coming back up to the lecture and tell us about how the water is discharged again?
Just to make clear. How it is discharged? It runs through the, it runs off of a boiler. Boiler heats the water, creates the saturated steam, steam is in the vessel, heated at approximately 300 degrees, which creates the sterility of the steam and of all the pathogens in it, in the vessel. Once it is, once it is, once it is released, condensed down, that water is transferred into a vessel that will hold it and cool it. And that was one of the processes that the water, the water wanted to see. It cools it, and then it is released into the sanitary sewer. One point also is that everything that we're doing is also done within the four walls of our building. It's not a transfer station where we have everything outside, everything is done in a new facility.
Mr. Locke, any questions?
Yes.
I must run a good point, how many gallons does it take to do one run?
Takes about approximately 60 to 80 gallons to, and the steam will discharge.
Are you using, are you using that water, do you quite reuse it if it goes?
We have, actually have discussed that with, with the water authority about installing a recycling system. We check with manufacturer on that. Nobody's doing that at this point. I think it's something to look forward, a forward thinking. Economically, it's not the best thing, but as we grow, it's very well to be a possibility. We don't, we don't have that much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Chairman, I would like to say, come on up there. Your, your citizens sitting here today, you called about speaking, and you came here to speak, this is your time, and I really don't want you to leave and think, well, I should have said this, or I should have said that. This, this is your time. This is the public hearing, and this is where you're, you're going to speak. I don't like it that we're not able to do anything about it on our end, but if a citizen and you, you've got concerns about it, come up here and sign up.
Thank y'all. I spoke the last time we were here.
Thanks, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tanyi Hope's call. And part of my concern is, I know Mr. Klett asked about cancerous waste or what have you, but, you know, you have, the galls and things would be blood and material, so you've got concern with Hep C, HIV, those kind of things. I know that they, they are making it into a sterile product, but it has to be transported here, so that's going to be coming through our community in transport trucks, supposedly packaged where it can't be released, but if you had a wreck and it fell over, things open up, accidents do happen, as Trinie stated. These are all concerns that I have, with it being in the hub of Hyrum. I welcome growth. There's many companies that I've heard from my work, of people that want to grow, put their business in that same location, in that industrial park. That was zoned heavy industrial back when everything was booming in Pauling County. I think it needs to be reconsidered as a heavy industrial, maybe a light industrial, so that we could have businesses there, but I feel like that's outdated, and that's something that needs to be looked at. It could be put in another part of the county or somewhere else, like Mr. Spark stated, where there's a where there's other chemical companies and things that are of that environment there. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Um, my name is Carmen Rollins. Um, I just have a couple of points that I would like to make since the last meeting was not the official public hearing, and you said that all this information's going to be going to the, the, I want to make sure that a couple of things get reiterated. Um, one thing, just personally, is I know that over the past ten years in the city of Hyrum, we have worked very hard, um, to create an atmosphere of a nice living environment. We've added a lot of sidewalks, streetlights, encouraged, you know, people to get out of their homes and get out and walk and, and, uh, live a healthy lifestyle. Uh, the Silver Comet Trail, that is one of our county's greatest resources, I think, is, goes straight, kind of parallel to where this, all this traffic's going to be taking place. Um, Metro Mount Road, we have a bridge that people cross over on the Silver Comet Trail every day. And, like the lady for me, accidents do happen a lot in Hyrum because of the amount of traffic that we have been through there. Um, one of the things that concerned me that I wanted to make sure was in this public record today is the amount of experience that these gentlemen, um, mentioned with their company. All sounds pretty impressive, but the question was asked last time, where other than this location do they have a location that does this exact procedure? And I believe, if I remember correctly, that the answer was, this was the first of its kind. So I kind of feel like we're going to be the guinea pigs for, you know, whether this works like it's supposed to or not. Um, I live as the crow flies about a mile from where all this is going to be taking place, as do many of the people probably in this room. Um, so that concerns me greatly that, you know, the what ifs could go wrong, because things do go wrong. Um, I would like, just, if it's okay by a show of hands, how many people in this room are here to oppose this project? Would you mind raising your hand if you're here to oppose this project? Just so people know how many people are here that do not want this in our community. And again, um, it's not that we don't want your business in our county. I think jobs are important to our county, but as I believe Trinie said, we don't want jobs that are going to be a detriment to our county just to get a few jobs into our county. Um, so it's not that we, you know, wish you anything but well with your venture, but we just really don't want to have it in our neighborhood. So Pauling County still has a lot of land available where this possibly could go, and it would not present problems that we feel like it's going to present to our community. So, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Norma Head. I live in Hyrum, Georgia, and I've got to meet my several years, because I've got fifty-one behind me. But I would say that, uh, like everyone else, I agree with everything that's been said so far, and while I wish these gentlemen well as well, I don't want this facility in my back door, and that's literally just about where it would be. But, um, we have a Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, and I know that most of you commissioners have been to our Wild Game Dinner there, so you know it's a pretty good sized church. We have a lot of youth and a lot of children there. We have, uh, a lot of facilities in the back of the property for them. And, um, I don't want that for them, and I don't want it for the, for the elementary school that's with probably a half mile from there. And I don't want it for all the businesses, for all the restaurants, and for all the people who travel through there. I don't think it's the right thing for that area. But I do agree with the lady just a few minutes ago who said, there's, there's got to be someplace else in Pauling County. Pauling County's got everything. And so there's got to be a place for this somewhere else in Pauling County. Uh, if, if not, I, I would, I don't know if this is, is okay, but I would like to know if any of these gentlemen live in, in Hyrum. Because if you don't have a vested interest in the area, then I don't think that you, you really can appreciate how we all feel about this facility going into our area. So I want to go and record as saying, I don't want this in, in this particular area. And I, I do wish them well, but not, not right where they're wanting to put this, because it's not a good place for it, and there's got to be a better place.
Thank you.
No, sit, Norma, sit.
Mr. Madison, up here.
I'm scared to death, as you might can tell from my trembling voice, because I've never done anything like this before, but, um, I belong barefoot in a kitchen baking, but, um, I don't, I don't, um, I might be wrong, but I have a feeling that if this facility gets in here as, as it's listed right now, there's a real good opportunity down the road for it to be something different, something even more dramatic than what it's going to be now. And, and have the potential for being more hazardous or dangerous to the area. And like the old saying goes, I was born at night, but not last night. And, and I just really don't think that, um, we can always count on, um, there being no accidents. We know how many accidents there have been right there at that crossing that would literally be right at that facility. So I really think that the danger involved is, is not good, and the potential for it to become more than it is now is, is great too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Norma, do you think of anything else? Come back up. You did a good job.
Sue Wilkins. I have a question.
Did you sign in?
Yes, I did. What happened with the water from a failed autoclade process? Since it's not sterile?
We'll, we'll, we'll address that in just a second so everybody can hear. I'll have to come to the lecture. I do that, oh, can't you give us just a moment to answer that question? Jeff, would you like to come in? I have a question. What happens to the water?
If the treatment, if the treatment process stops, didn't work or whatnot, it, it's not released from the vessel yet until, until the protocol states that it is processed properly, so it would not be released. The mystery process.
Okay, thank you.
It's all right. Oh, we'll get that in.
That's good, thanks. I have no problem. I'm just signing. I have to agree with what some of these people said. We know how things start out, and they can morph into something much bigger than what originally was there. We have industrial parks in Pauling County. We have industrial parks that are practically sitting empty, um, that this may be a better fit for. But the thing that you probably do have control over is our landfill. And it sort of, you know, as, as a board of commissioners, I would think that using our landfill would be just as much a detriment to the community as any type of this facility would be. So while we may not have control over approval, you may have control over location and what happens to, to the waste from this. So, thank you, and I hope you will consider that for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Randy Batlin, and I live in Hyrum, Georgia. And I just have one quick question about how Mother Nature's changed, and you can heat water under any amount of pressure to 300 degrees Fahrenheit as stated. In my fifteen or twenty years of chemical background, water can never be heated in that temperature as stated. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jeff, did you want to? The water is not being heated. The steam is being heated and is pressurized, and it's to about 290 degrees, almost 300 degrees.
One of the concerns I heard was that if this water can never be released, and you just keep using it over and over, and what you eventually do with this water, that, you know, if for some reason it cannot be dispersed into our sewer system because of the, um, the sterilization of it. And my other question is, we mentioned Pauling County landfill, and you mentioned there's only two other landfills in the whole state of Georgia I suppose that accepts this place. So I would like to know why that is. I mean, you know, one more, there's a lot of landfills, and that's my concern.
Jeff, you want to come and address, uh, this water situation? I think if, if there were a failed system and the water sits there, uh, for a period of time and then asked...
With the protocol where it'd be transported, that means that the system would not be working, it would be transported to another location. It would not just keep doing that. And the second question was about the landfills. Um, the landfills, there are multiple landfills. I just stated two that, that were available, were the closest. Um, yes, there are multiple landfills around the state that will take it. Some, some are C and D landfills. We locate that, um, they have to be, you know, a landfill that will accept it, but there are others.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Uh, I think keep in mind that the U P D, uh, the, uh, E P D, uh, is supposed to be working for us, so I think it's our job to contact them when we have, uh, concerns as a citizen, Environmental Protection Division. You talk about EPA, you talk about federal folks, so they're here to protect us. We're naive to think that chemicals don't run up and down our road every single day. God bless us that we have no clue what really travels on our roads, we'd be scared to death if it allowed, but, uh, it's being transported from, uh, our hospitals and stuff now. Uh, it's going somewhere else, uh, and, and traveling long distances, so we can't be naive to think that if this doesn't happen, we won't have any of those chemicals out on road. They pass through here. The largest, uh, railroad depot around is just a few miles south of Pauling. I don't have a clue what comes in and out there. I really don't want to know. But, uh, stopping this facility doesn't stop that from traveling on our roads, but it is, if I understand correctly, the U P D is there for us to call, to talk, to write? They're there for our protection. It's probably, yes, I missed a second.
I keep, there's a general consensus back here, if this hearing was held at a, a different time, that this building wouldn't contain the overflow of people, because people have to work. So, um, and my other question was about the odor. I don't think that was ever, I, I know with a small pressure cooker in my kitchen, with certain vegetables and greens, uh, the house is evacuated. So I would like to know what, uh, how the odor issue addressed beyond mine. Thank you very much.
I'm one of the few that'd like to come to your house when you're doing that cooking. Is it a moth or a...
You can give me that hours notice and make that happen. Bring it with the family.
Jeff, do you mind, um, addressing odor?
I, I'm not going to say there's not any odor at all. There is an odor, but it's, it's a plastic, uh, from a heated plastic odor that, uh, that you, you as well, it is, you would not smell that on the outside of the building, standing in the park. Like I said, everything happens inside the building. And I'll give an example of it. There's one of these systems in a hospital, it's actually in the hospital, in the basement of a hospital, not the basement, it's on the first, the back dock of a hospital in Nashville, in Hyrum.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, David, can I just stand here if I pop out?
No, now, you need to hear your...
I'm getting tired of what you're talking about.
I know when you first approached Jeff, you mentioned that, you mentioned the galls and things like that, and doctors and everything, but I think at our last meeting, you know, there was an understanding that it was going to be probably fluies, lice, things like that too then. And, and who knows what is, you know, could be in any of those things, uh, as you mentioned, cancer, no cancer issues at all, but there again, when you're testing people and before you even know what the diagnosis might be, and you've got all this stuff, you know, this pressure and everything, if anybody's guess what could be included in that. And so if you have something, can educate me better about there, that's, now that's a concern of mine. Oh, and one other thing, I said it before, any way to access this property, which is a busy road, you have to travel over a, a railroad track, or you will have to come right through our residential section of, if you come down through 78 and everything, you're going to have to cross railroad to get there, are in railroad courses, are dangerous, or you're going to have, you're going to have to come through the residential, I mean, this residential section of Hyrum. Thank you.
From the standpoint of, um, liquids and those kind of things, we are not allowed to, uh, when we transport, in the hospitals or, or doctor's offices or locations, we, we are not allowed to accept or to take bulk liquids. Everything has to be in non-molecular form. That's the, that's the, a big part about, about that. We do not process any large liquids around. And I'm sorry to be...
I was just concerned by having to travel a train or a countrywide, um, that's the area of the city of Mount.
Well, the way, yes, the, the way that the, the traffic is set up, the major thoroughfare there, it would be using would be, uh, Metro Mount Road and Woodville Crossroad.
Anybody else wishing to speak in this public hearing? Now, we will declare the public hearing, uh, closed.